Well, good morning, community. This is it. This is the one we've been waiting for. The Super Bowl, the state of origin. John Ojaka is going to be taking the stand today. And after an electric day yesterday, it was really significant. We had Vishwa retaking the stand, answering some hard questions. There was quite a few surprises. But before we recap on yesterday, let's have, take a look and see what's coming up today. Now, you'll notice that Michael's not with me because he is actually in the courtroom and posted this a little bit earlier today. So let's, um, but let's pause.
So, good morning, BJ. Good morning, listeners and viewers and everybody else who's out there. It's Michael Anjolkovic here, your raving reporter for 2GLF and for the peer at Circular Key. As you can see behind me, I've just topped off the train and I'm about to walk up to the courthouse, 161, um, sorry, 121 Macquarie Street, entry off Bridge Street. So it's about a 10, 15 minute leisurely walk from, from Circular Key. Anyway, today, very, very important, we've got John Ojaka. The pieces have been falling into place. This inquiry, you could view it as a jigsaw puzzle or as a join the dots. So we've had witnesses, a few witnesses now, as you're well aware, Farukh Portelli, Vishwa Nadu and a couple of other employees of Liverpool Council. There were some allegations made or statements made by Mr. Portelli in relation to issues of creative accounting, and that's been looked at. But today, we've got John Ojaka in the stands. So we've got one side of the story. Now we get to see the other side of the story. And that's going to be very, uh, when you look at things like timelines, when you look at the connections, who was in certain meetings to witness certain events? So, um, I'll talk, we'll talk more about this on the show tomorrow. So make sure that you stay tuned. But like I said, it's a join the dots. It's a jigsaw puzzle and the pieces are falling into. We've got another three, uh, three and a half weeks of inquiry to go. And I don't want to jump the gun and I'm not going to jump the gun. It's the case of, uh, we will look at all the, all the inquiries, all the, all the evidence as the commissioner has to, and he will then have to make a determination based on, and piece it all together. And that's part of the, um, interesting part of doing an analysis of this inquiry. So stay tuned, uh, listeners and viewers. I'll certainly be putting some updates in through the day with BJ. Unfortunately, we've got some technical difficulties in that I can't really hear him, but he can hear me. So, um, look, I'm going to head up to the courthouse now and, um, BJ through the day. And certainly let you know, the interesting part of doing this live is to be aware and to find out who is actually sitting in the courtroom, who are the other players there and what's going on. So over to you, BJ.
Right, so, uh, there you have it, um, a sideways Michael, very excited to get in there. Uh, I have to admit, I didn't get a lot of sleep last night either. Um, just for everyone's benefit out there across Liverpool and Fairfield, um, Mr. John Ojaka has just arrived this morning. Um, there is absolutely no space in the courtroom, I'm told. Uh, it is completely booked out. Um, so you'll have to go into a separate room. The overflow room is also starting to fill up very, very quickly. Um, Alan Gale from Communications is there. Um, and, uh, uh, John did welcome Michael this morning. So, uh, he just, uh, Michael gave, John gave him a nod and a bit of a wave as he walked in. Uh, so the schedule for today, listeners, um, is going to be 10 to 11:30 is going to be the first section. It's all John Ojaka today. Um, and then at 11:30, there'll be a short break until 12 o'clock. Um, and then they'll resume fun till 2:00 PM and then from 2:00 to 4:00, they'll go flat out. Um, now, uh, he is going to appear today. What do we expect? Um, well, look, there's a lot of things that remain unanswered and, um, this $25 million worth of creative accounting has got to have been got in there somewhere. So I expect that they'll be asking answers about that today. Um, testimony over the last few days has been that it was under the instruction, um, of John Ojaka, it was asked of him. Um, so, but, you know, he hasn't had a chance to reply yet. So let's see what he's got to say about that today. The other thing that I was thinking about last night is, you will remember back in April 2000, he was down protesting at council chambers. Uh, and that was on the premise that there was going to be 150 jobs apparently allegedly get going. And at the time, Ned Manon said, well, no, no one's going to be losing their jobs. And yesterday, under oath, Vishwa was asked, was he ever asked to prepare any kind of financial, uh, financials to support 150 people getting clipped? And he answered no. So there's something going on here that isn't quite right. And I don't know what it is. I don't know who said it. And this is the reason why we've got this public inquiry, I guess. Um, it is fantastic to, um, to finally get some of these answers. Um, as Michael pointed out and very well, what you can expect today is that, um, uh, they will be asking questions about that creative accounting. They'll be asking about that situation in April, the, um, the things that came to, um, uh, ahead in, in the process of him leaving Liverpool Council. So it's going to be a very exciting day for listeners. This really is the one that we've been waiting for. I mean, I've been trying to interview John, um, and a lot of that is going to be, uh, you know, because of everything that's going on here. Um, please tune in tomorrow. Uh, just so everyone knows, we were planning to have councillor Peter Rostewski on tomorrow. Uh, we've received legal advice from his solicitor that, um, he's going to be unable to appear on the radio show tomorrow. But please tune in tomorrow, um, at 9:00 AM and, uh, we'll be going right through, uh, with the public hearings as long as we possibly can. Uh, the other one here you'll see up on the screen is that it's the Liverpool City Council, uh, council meeting tonight. And, uh, for the first time, they're going to be offering free sandwiches and wraps to people that turn up and, uh, you'll be able to eat free and stuff. There are quite a few questions with notice that are going to be quite interesting. Um, there's also going to be everything that's coming out and bubbling in the, you know, from, from these hearings. You know, people are going to want clarification on. Uh, it'll be interesting to see if the mayor actually shows up. I just don't know what will happen. Um, but, um, you know, I guess a lot of it will depend on where things land today and what goes on around there. So that's fantastic. I think that that's pretty much it. As I said, please tune in, uh, tomorrow. Just in review, as I said, Vishwa yesterday, he was asked about those things. There was a lot more sort of financial stuff, but I think that now the answers that we've finally been looking for, for all this time. So I'm going to, uh, head over to, um, Sydney now. We're, we're just probably, um, a couple of minutes away from, from going live. Just a reminder that, um, you can make comments while the, the stream is going on on Facebook, um, if you wish, but please bear in mind that any comment that you do make, uh, you know, uh, can't have a defamatory, any defamatory remarks in it. So just try and be mindful of that if you're posting. Um, we're more than happy to, to show those comments here. Um, the other thing I guess is that, um, uh, that you need to know is that we went through the breaks already, sorry, but, um, you know, tuning in tomorrow, we'd love to hear, uh, from local residents about what's been going on this week and what's been coming up for them. Hearing this stuff for the first time or have been following it for a little while, give us a call live in studio from 9:30 in the morning and our number is 9822893. Both Michael and I will be there to take your calls. And I wish everyone a great day. We won't be doing a mid-morning catch-up, I don't think, but it depends how Michael feels. But we'll be bringing you, um, all the action, um, as it, as it comes to hand. And, uh, remember, uh, you know, you can watch back. Um, the, the, I guess the frustration with, with the live stream, um, uh, coming out is that you can't go back and view it at a later time. If I, just put that address up for you here. Um, so you can see there, if you go across to youtube.com, @LocalNewsPulse, you will be able to see yesterday and the day before's hearing. So anything that was done in the, we split it up into AM and a PM. And, uh, the mid-morning break, that short break, uh, we leave it streaming. So, um, you know, just have those two sessions a day. Um, please go back and watch Vishwa. There was a lot of information there. Um, a little hard to watch at times, just, just given it's quite monotonous and a lot of it's about financial stuff. But, uh, don't worry, we more than make up for it today as, um, John Ojaka takes the stand. And, uh, you have to remember that, uh, John Ojaka and Ned were good, uh, good friends. In fact, I've, I've seen images of, um, you know, uh, both of them at the, at the Liberal Party and, you know, Ned putting something on for, for John Ojaka. So there was, you know, there was time where these guys were good mates, uh, I guess is the point I'm, I'm trying to make. Um, and, uh, both belong to the same political party, you know? There's been a lot of having political parties, um, have too much influence in local council because it just makes it extremely hard. Um, and, uh, you know, I tend to agree with that in a lot of respects. Um, I think over in Fairfield, they run an independent council and Frank does an outstanding job with his councillors. In fact, um, you know, council meetings over in Fairfield take sort of an hour. They're very functional, very quick, and they're more about the community than about what's actually, you know, getting I's dotted and T's crossed in a council minute. So, um, I think that that is, uh, you know, there's a lot that Liverpool Council can learn. And I think, you know, given that Liverpool is such a, I, uh, I, uh, encourage everyone to watch as much of this as you can. And if you can't, get back onto the live stream, um, onto YouTube later in the day. There's the, the link there. Well, anytime you can go back and have a look. Okay, so, uh, have a great day, everyone, and, um, we'll cross life to Sydney.
We'll fight the powers that be just don't quit contest that because you don't know us, you don't belong.
Yes. No administration from our, um... ...point of view, I don't know. If anybody else has got anything to raise?
Can I just raise one matter from the transcript yesterday?
Yes.
It's at page 451. The passage where I was asking Mr. Dunson questions and at about line 32, I asked him about the cash expense cover ratio. And then he answers from line 35. And then at line 37, he says, according to the transcript, and I guess again, it's flawed a little bit to the extent that it excludes section 711 money. Then the transcript records me saying excludes restricted funds. My recollection is then you'll see, um, the witness goes on to say, so if you're talking current assets and current liabilities, looking at tow caps, you can't touch that. And then I asked, do you have a sense of what the cover would be if one ignored the restriction? So my recollection is that excludes in line 37 and line 40 should be includes. Don't need anyone to answer now, but if that could be checked, um, and the correction made, uh, unless, other than that, is there anything else we need to do?
I don't think so. I called John Ojaka.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Ojaka. Do you take an oath or an affirmation?
Oath, Commissioner.
Someone will help you with that.
Um, do you swear by almighty God that the evidence is the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Full name?
Uh, John George Ojaka.
Your current occupation?
Um, I'm a non-executive director on a number of companies.
Uh, Mr. Ojaka, uh... When did you first become involved with Liverpool City Council?
Yes.
No, when?
Oh, sorry. Um, I commenced employment about mid-December 2022. Went on holidays and then came back about mid-January 2023.
And the commencement of your employment there, that was in the role of the general manager or CEO?
CEO.
Uh, now, that, your appointment to that role, that came about, um, as a result of... the role being advertised and you submitting an application?
Correct.
Uh, the application or recruitment process, was there a recruitment agency assisting in the process, uh, which is, was known as Blackadder Associates?
Correct.
And during the time of your application and interviews and other Stephen Blackadder?
Yes.
Now, the application that you made was in writing. Uh, could, uh, could we please bring up document LCC 002.004.0062?
Just in the room at the moment?
Uh, this is Mr. Ojaka's application for the position of Chief Executive Officer. I did wish to put it on the live stream.
There may be some redacted information in this document or report to be redacted?
Well, there are redactions, excuse me.
It's there, okay. That's just, let's bring it.
I'm just going to double check that. If you could do it in the room, um, for example, there should be redactions on the first page. Yes.
Can that, does that deal with your concern, Mr. Parish?
Yes.
Now, that's the first page of the application.
Yes.
I wanted to take you through to page one. Uh, it sets out your tertiary qualifications, which are a diploma in law through the Solicitor's Submission Board.
Correct.
And if we go to the next page, I wanted to take you to the top to your, um, employment summary.
Yes.
Uh, which is depicted on the screen at the moment.
Yes.
Which involved, uh, working as a solicitor.
Yes.
Um, and also for a period of about 13 or 14 years, being a member of the Legislative Council in the Parliament of New South Wales.
Yes.
Uh, which party did you represent?
Liberal Party.
And your role within the Legislative Council, were you ever assigned a particular role within that House?
Yes, so initially I was parliamentary secretary in opposition, then I was parliamentary secretary in government. I chaired a number of committees when I was in opposition. Um, I then became the minister in 2013 for about four years. I became deputy leader of the government with a few extra portfolios. And then ultimately, in, I believe, 2017, I became the president of the Legislative Council.
What ministerial portfolios?
So I had five. I had Minister for Aging, Minister for Disability, uh, Minister for Youth, Minister for Volunteering and Minister for Multiculturalism.
Thank you.
Still looking at your employment summary, uh, you left Parliament in 2021 and then as indicated, did you become involved in, sorry, involved in corporate governance in a number of companies or institutions?
Yeah, as a non-executive, uh, director to some private companies and the chairman of the Sydney Local District Board.
Uh, now... During your work history, did you have any role or any involvement with any other council?
So I was before I entered Parliament, I was a councillor for Rockdale City Council between 12 and 17. So there was this six-month period where I was a councillor and a member of the Legislative Council.
The recruitment process, uh, which led to your appointment, um, in addition to submitting your written, um, application, uh, at any time, were you interviewed by a panel from the council?
Yes, on a number of occasions. So there was a first interview, which I believe was around five councillors. Then there was a second interview. And then finally, there was the appearing before the entire council, which I took as a, a third interview process because I was asked questions and told to make a statement.
The first interview you mentioned, excuse me, my recollection is that there were five councillors present.
My recollection.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ojaka, could I just trouble you to keep your voice up?
Certainly, my recollection.
It's a beautiful room, but the sound carried that well. Thank you.
Uh, there were five councillors?
That's my recollection.
You were...
Ned Manon, um, councillor Green. There was councillor Caress. They're the two, they're the three that I clearly remember. Uh, yes, there was councillor Fiona McDonald. And there may have been one more councillor, I just can't remember now.
Was Stephen Blackadder in attendance at the interview?
Yes, and at times he asked questions.
The second interview was the panel, again, a subset of the councillors?
Yes, and I believe Peter...
Included in the first interview panel?
Yes.
The second interview panel was at the same councillors?
Same councillors.
And again with Mr. Blackadder there?
Yes.
And then the third interview, which was really like a presentation to the whole council?
Correct. That was the time I was told that the council would see, um, the three of us. I had no idea who the other two were. And that council would then vote on which of the three of us would be the new CEO.
Can you just pause for a moment, Miss McDonald?
Stop right.
Yes.
The, uh, third interview stroke presentation, did that occur on the 6th of December 2022?
Honor, about it was, I know it was at least maybe one, two days before I actually started. I think it was on, um, one day, I signed the agreement the next day and then started in a sense the following day.
Would you bring up the, um, minutes of an extraordinary council meeting on that day? Um, minutes being INQ dot 001 dot 001 dot 0995. And would you... Just a minute. Sorry, would you just go back to page three? Oh, sorry.
You're, you're ahead of us, Miss McDonald.
Yes, sorry, I'm getting... Yes, please. So you can see it's the minutes of the extraordinary meeting held on the 6th of December. Would you go through the page, Z underscore 0002? Would you go through the page Z underscore zero 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 two? If you can go to the section on that page, declarations of interest. Now, I don't know if you've seen this before.
No.
But I want to ask you some questions about the declarations of interest. You'll see that a councillor had did declared a non-procurnary less than significant interest in the following items, selection of the CEO, and he says he knew two of the applicants through his involvement in local government and to his knowledge, they are members of the Liberal Party. Did you know councillor Hadid beforehand?
Yes, again, I'd met him at Liberal Party functions or meetings.
And then the mayor declares again a non-procurnary less than significant interest in, in that item. His reason is that all applicants are known to the mayor through his involvement in local government since two thousand and eight. Did you know the mayor through your membership of the Liberal Party?
Yes.
How long had you known Mr. Manon? Sorry, also.
Yep.
As at December twenty twenty two, how long had you known Mr. Manon?
I believe I would have first become aware of him and other Liberal councillors when I was elected as a councillor at Rockdale Council. I definitely became aware of them when I got elected to Parliament.
The your membership of the, of the Liberal Party of Australia, New South Wales branch. You got to know the mayor through that?
Yes, a lot of councillors.
All right, and up until December twenty twenty two, how would you describe your association with the mayor?
At that time, I considered we were friends.
Was it a close association?
I mean, I never went to his home, he never went to my home type of association, but yes, I considered we were friends. We met at many functions in particular.
Your decision to apply for the CEO position, before making the decision and submitting the application, did you have any discussions with Mr. Manon about that application?
I recall receiving a phone call from Ned Manon telling me that they were looking to hire a new CEO and suggesting to me I should apply.
Roughly, when did that occur?
The application was already up or the ad was already up. It would have been about probably at most two weeks, if not a week before I put the application in. I did indicate to Mr. Manon that I wasn't interested. I said no.
After that communication where you said that you weren't interested, before you actually put in your application, did you, were you contacted again by Ned Manon?
Yes, he rang me a second time and again stressed that he really wanted me to apply. He had huge issues at Liverpool and felt that I would be the person who could fix those issues.
In that conversation, did he identify to you what these issues were?
There was some serious problems with the staff unions, quite a few matters being reported to the Office of Local Government and various other matters. Also, I believe he indicated, from memory, it was the first time he indicated that they were building a new building and he was really concerned about that. I said no.
Oh.
I again declined and said no, I was happy with what I was doing and I just.
Was that second approach about two weeks before you actually submitted your application?
About, yeah, about two, it could have even been a week because I know I had to get into the application very quickly.
Before you submitted your application, was there any other contact with Mr. Manon?
I received a phone call from Stephen Blackadder who told me that the mayor suggested he give me a call. He was the recruiter. I'd known Stephen from the days of Rockdale Council. He indicated to me that he thought I would be perfect for the position and that I really should consider applying for it. I'd be able to make a big difference. And at the end of the day, by the time I finished the phone call, I agreed to put in the application.
Your knowledge of Mr. Blackadder, you said that arose from when you were a councillor on Rockdale Council?
Yes, so prior to my being on Rockdale Council, Blackadder was the General Manager at Rockdale Council and I had my legal office at Rockdale, so I'd come across him. He had an amazing reputation and when he left Rockdale Council, he was seen as, as the father of GMs. He would, you know, write books, he would get involved in a very big way. He was seen as the number one general manager of his time.
So after speaking with Mr. Blackadder, you then changed your mind?
I spoke to my wife and changed my mind.
That might be the most important of those.
It was.
And I won't ask you details of that conversation.
Thank you.
But you, you put in the application and as you've given evidence, you have the two interviews and then the final presentation.
Yes.
At the, I think it's the council, extraordinary council meeting on the sixth of December. After, while you give your presentation, is your understanding that the council then moves into some kind of closed session?
I was put in a waiting area, called in, was dealt with, I was then told to leave. So I literally left, topped in my car and started driving home.
And you didn't see the other applicants who were presenting?
I had no idea who they were until a few weeks after I started.
And after you left and went home, did you receive any phone call?
I actually received a phone call while I was still in the car driving home.
From whom?
Stephen Blackadder from memory.
And what did Mr. Blackadder tell you?
Congratulations, the council voted unanimously to appoint you.
When he said unanimous, did he mention whether all the councillors were actually present at that time?
No, I took it to mean that everyone voted for me.
They were the words he used, unanimously voted in favour of.
Yes.
Now, subsequent to that conversation, did you receive a letter of offer of employment from the mayor?
From recollection, Blackadder mentioned to me that I should come in the next day and it would be necessary to sign the contracts.
And was the contract for five years?
Correct.
Without taking you to the contract, we have a summary of its terms. Could document L C C dash zero zero two dash zero zero seven dash zero zero nine two be brought up? And if you could just pause before live streaming it? No problems? All right, that can be live streamed, please. Now, the the contract period has got T B A against that, but it's effective from the twelfth of December. And you can see set out the annual total remuneration package being five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Under the components, it sets out the cash component, superannuation and some kind of vehicle allowance.
Yes.
Vehicle?
Yes.
And that's your recollection of the remuneration package that you accepted in your role as CEO?
Correct.
In addition, I think you've agreed it was for a period of five years.
Correct.
And I wasn't going to bring up the contract, I can if you want to. But was your understanding it was based on the model contract for general managers, which is produced by the Office of Local Government?
That's what I was informed.
And within that contract, there are provisions for termination for misconduct or cause or aspects like that?
And if, if for no cause.
That was going to be my next question. And in addition, a provision that the contract can be terminated without cause, but then there is a subsequent payment for terminating the contract in those circumstances.
Correct.
And that payment was based on, was it thirty eight?
Thirty eight weeks.
Thirty eight weeks. Now, I won't go into this in detail, but in twenty twenty three, was there correspondence received from the Office of Local Government concerning a complaint about your appointment?
Yes.
As part of that inquiry or investigation by the Office of Local Government, is it your understanding that documents and other information was provided to the Office of Local Government?
Correct.
And ultimately, the Office of Local Government was satisfied with what was provided to them and it went no further?
Correct.
Now, I think you, you gave evidence that though your contract started on the twelfth of December.
Yes.
You really started work in earnest, if I can describe it in that way, in January.
Yes, I spent a week in December, just simply in the office, getting my feet under the desk of course, and reading a lot of documents that were left on my desk.
Now, was one of the first matters that you started looking at was a restructure of the council?
I thought about it at that time, but it was when I came back in January that I started to seriously look at it. During that week in December, I was just trying to understand what the then structure was, but could not make sense of it. And then when I came back, revisited it and then started making inquiries about it.
When you say you couldn't make sense of it, why was that?
I, I used the expression previously during the meeting, so it looked like someone had taken a deck of cards, thrown it in the air and where it landed was the structure. You had people reporting to two or three people, you had people reporting to me, then reporting to a director. It, it really, it was a very unworkable. Inquiries, the first inquiries I made were with the USU union delegates who also indicated to me they didn't quite understand it and didn't believe it had been implemented. It was still a work in progress that everyone was confused about.
Thank you.
Would document I N Q dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot one two six four be brought up? It can be live streamed. Mr. Jacques, that is an organisational structure and we've been provided with the date as at August twenty twenty two. Looking at that structure, is that the structure that you inherited when you started in December?
So that's not what I was shown in December. What I was shown in December was more circular. It was basically circular diagrams, circular diagrams crossing, arrows going into circular diagrams. And it's where I got the concept of the deck of cards. This, I believe, must came later when we were relooking at it, where I started to ask them to try and make sense of what the structure was meant to be, but definitely not the first one I saw.
I don't think we have a circular.
No, perhaps, well, that might be addressed in the matter that I raised with Mr. Emmett yesterday.
At that point.
Sorry, just before you move on, Miss, I'm sorry, so sorry to interrupt. Although you didn't see this in December, once you came to start to get your head around what the structure was, is this what it looked like?
I was shown this and where literally every major important department was somehow rather reporting directly to me only and not to the directors, which again made no sense to me.
Or, or, but was, was what you came to understand of the structure after you came back in the January period, was it this or was it something different to what's on the screen now?
No, it was basically this at the end when I said and started to make inquiries about this with the various groups.
And your concern with that structure is that even though it's got the Office of the CEO and then a number of, or six directorships, is your concern that if you move up to the rectangle with Office of the CEO, the number of other subgroups that are reporting directly to the CEO?
Yes, and my view was that the vast majority, if not all of them at the time, really should be reporting to their directors. It's why the directors were there. One of the things that I noticed when I first looked at this document is that you had one director, corporate service, who simply had one small section underneath. Again, it made no sense.
So in twenty twenty three, you embarked on a restructuring procedure where, but which would eventually lead to a restructure of the operation of the actual council?
Correct.
How long did that restructure take you?
From memory, you know, six to seven months.
And just put broadly, who was consulted?
So initially, I, I started with the union delegates, the senior staff, the directors. The directors and I on at least three or four occasions in the beginning would whiteboard what we thought the structure should look like. We then went out and I had the directors talk to some of their staff. We then, I spoke to the councillors in either an information session or a governance meeting. I also raised it with Eric and then it just started to move from there in various entities, if I can use that, or formations, where it just moved and moved until it finally got to. It needed to be passed twice by council in formal meetings, a stage one and a stage two. And stage one was passed and then sometime later, stage two, the final structure was passed.
What was the difference? What was the difference?
Stage one was more the macro, the CEO and the directors and the departments. Stage two was more who would be underneath them because we still had to do quite a bit of work by transferring certain sections to certain directors.
Would you bring up document LCC dot zero zero one dot zero zero two dot zero zero one one? And it can be live streamed.
And I understand.
The machines are on the go slow this time.
I've got to say, it's really good having it like this.
If at any time you need something blown up or made smaller to see more of it, you just let us know, okay?
Thank you.
This, as you can see from the right hand top corner, is Liverpool City Council High Level Organisation Structure, October 2023. It's got the Chief Executive Officer and then six directorships underneath that. Can you see that?
Yes, I can.
And then underneath each directorship, a number of.
Sections.
Sorry?
A number of sec, I call them sections.
Sections, departments or something like that?
Sections of a department, all collectively, each one was a department under a director. And then there were the sections within the department.
And the Chief Executive Officer is obviously reporting to the mayor and councillors.
Yes.
And from what we saw from that previous organisational structure, the various other sections that were reporting directly to the CEO have been removed.
Had been put under a director.
Sorry, removed from directing, sorry, directly reporting to you?
Yes.
And then, as you said, included within the directorships.
Correct.
Now, looking at this diagram, is this incorporate, it obviously incorporates.
It's a little bit blurry on my screen. Oh, that's much better. Thank you.
With the nomination of the directors, it incorporates stage one of your restructure?
Yes, I can't remember the date that occurred and then stage two, I think, was maybe a month or two later.
Looking at the various section boxes and how they're arranged under particular directors, looking at that structure, does that appear to have incorporated stage two of your restructure?
I believe so, yes.
So this is both stage one and stage two?
I believe so.
When you started work at the council, can you recall how many directors there were?
There were five. There was no city futures.
Now, city futures is the first directorship along the left hand side.
Yes.
Was it identified as part of your review for the first structural?
Yes, so when we were whiteboarding and we were looking and talking, it became clear that we needed a city futures directorate to look at, you know, matters going forward, whether it was one year, five years, 10 years, 20 years. So we started to work on the basis of having that. During some meetings with the council, councilors, it was suggested that we do not proceed with city futures. So we ended up proceeding with the five before we finalized. And then a short time later, I received a phone call from the mayor saying that he'd met with the mayor of Sydney City Council and they spoke about their city futures directorate. And he suddenly thought it was a great idea and I should do it. And so we then started working at bringing it in and it was the last one they came in before it was finalized by council.
When you took up your appointment, you said there were five directors.
Correct.
Directors. At that point, were they all the actual people occupying those directorships? Were they all in their permanent position?
From memory, I believe two were, possibly three, no, three were, two were acting.
Who were the two who were acting?
I can't recall now.
When you, when this final structure was approved, did you embark on, I'm sorry, withdraw that, the three directors who were in a in a permanent role when you commenced, did they continue in their directorships?
No, three of the five directors, nothing one was acting. They left within a short period of time by agreement. And two remained. And then one of them, weeks later, also left by way of agreement. So I ended up with the situation of one permanent director and I had to appoint four acting directors immediately.
Your description of, I think, three left by agreement. When you say by agreement, that suggests that their contracts were not terminated for cause?
Correct.
Was it a matter of by agreement that for them to leave their position while their contract was still in force, they received some form of payment?
Correct, but it wasn't a redundancy and it wasn't a cause, it was a negotiated agreement.
Is it fair to describe that as some form of ex gratia payment that was made to them?
Yes.
So the three out of the five left by agreement, then subsequent to that, another one of the directors left by agreement?
Correct.
And that would have involved another ex gratia payment?
Correct.
With one remaining, do you recall who the remaining one was?
Yes, it was Tina Bono, who was the acting CEO when I first started.
You said there were four, then there were four acting.
Sorry, there were, there were three that were permanent and two were acting, but I can't recall which positions. But Tina Bono was one of the permanent.
And who was the other one?
Can't remember now.
So two permanent, three acting, the three who were acting, you appointed them?
They were all there before my time.
But, sorry, I don't think I'm being clear.
Sorry.
You said that when you commenced, a number of the directors left by agreement.
Four.
And when one of those directors left by agreement.
I appointed the acting.
You appointed the acting. And do you recall who you appointed in the acting?
Yes, Jason Breton went straight into operations. Farouk Patelli went straight into corporate. And the Lena Kikish went into planning. They were all, Lena Kikish, Farouk were existing employees. And customer and business. It was one of the existing employees that was in customer service. She took the role of acting. I can't remember her name now.
Mr. Portelli, at the time he was appointed in the acting role, he was providing consultancy services to the council.
Correct.
So from a six week contract, he was then appointed to the acting role?
Correct.
Mr. Breton, he hadn't worked for the council beforehand?
No.
How did you gain knowledge of him?
So shortly after, I think it was the next day that I was advised that I was successful. I received a phone call on my mobile and he introduced himself to me, indicating that he was one of the three applicants. At that stage, I wasn't aware of him or that he was an applicant. He congratulated me and said if you could have an opportunity to have a coffee with me because he would like to see if there was any possibility of work in Liverpool City Council.
Did you take him up on the coffee offer?
Absolutely. I had a, before I met with him, I was actually given a, all of the CVs and the Hogan assessments and all other documentation in relation to all of the seven applicants. And he was one of those. So when I read about him and his CV, absolutely, I met with him.
You said the seven applicants.
So I can't remember. I think there might have been 20 or more initially. And there were, there were seven of us that went in for one of the first or second interviews. And then ultimately, there were three of us that went in for that final interview with the councillors.
Around this time, were you contacted by Shane Mallard?
I don't recall being contacted him at that time, no.
Did you know Mr. Mallard before?
Yes, I'd worked with Mr. Mallard in Parliament and Mr. Mallard was one of the deputy presidents that I appointed.
So for a period of time, you've got two employees as directors in their permanent role and you're.
Sorry, only one. When all four left, I only had, because we only had five directorships.
Sorry.
We didn't have number six, city futures.
Yes, so one in its, the employee in their permanent role.
So Tina Bono was permanent in community and lifestyles.
Yep.
Jason Breton was appointed acting in operations. Lena Kikish was appointed in acting, planning and compliance. Farouk Patelli was appointed acting in corporate support. And I just can't recall her name. She was appointed in customer experience. Acting.
Now. At some time in 2023, Mr. Mallard is appointed to, in some temporary position at the council?
Yes, as a senior policy advisor to the mayor. The budget allowed for two policy advisors to the mayor, a senior and a junior. Prior to my time, they were existing positions.
So those positions, you said they're advisors to the mayor. Do they report directly to the mayor?
They work for me, but they work with the mayor. In a sense, I make them available to the mayor. The same with his EA and deputy EA. They both work for me, but in a sense, I make them available. And then in the restructure, they all went under one of the directors. They no longer reported to me.
All right, so before the restructure was finalized, the positions of executive assist, executive assistant and assistant, executive assistant or deputy executive assistant.
That's how the budget showed it.
They, if we're looking at just a reporting structure, they're reporting directly to you.
Initially, in the older structure.
Yes, but you make them available to the mayor and they're really working with and for the mayor.
Correct.
That same, kind of the formal reporting and then the way it worked in operation, when you came on board, the two senior and then junior advisor roles to the mayor also adopted that formal reporting, but informal operation?
Correct.
Total of four staff made available to the mayor?
He had a total of four staff, but then he wanted more.
Pause for a moment. You said that it was approved in the budget?
Yes, so there were line items in the budget. When I started, I was informed of this, that they were already line items in the budget. Their salaries, their wages were already an item in the budget and he was entitled to it. It was something that council had passed previously.
Was there ever any policy that you're aware of about staff of that kind being made available to whomever the mayor might be of the day?
Again, my understanding is that it was something that council had approved and they were budgeted items.
But approved through the budget as opposed to some standing policy?
I can't recall if there was standing policy. It would have been more for human resources to deal with that.
Thank you.
Did you realise that the previous mayor, Wendy Waller, didn't have at least the advisor positions?
I was told that.
So to your knowledge, the creation of the two advisor, policy advisor roles, that was implemented when Mr. Manoon became mayor again?
Yeah, I was informed that they existed the first time he was mayor. I was later informed that they ceased to exist when Mayor Wendy Waller. And then they, as soon as Ned Manoon became mayor again, they were again approved by council.
You said that when the overall restructure had been finalized.
Yes.
Instead of them reporting to you, they are now incorporated into the directorships or directorates?
Yes. From memory, I believe Tina Bono, community and lifestyles.
And was it your understanding that the two executive assistants to the mayor then reported directly to Ms. Bono?
Again, I believe it's Ms. Bono. It could be another director, but my recollection is Ms. Bono.
And is it your recollection that the two policy advisors also at that point reported directly to Ms. Bono?
Correct.
When you commenced as the CEO, you were still in the Moore Street premises?
Correct.
Physically, there is an, the mayor has an office?
Correct.
The two executive assistants, do they sit nearby the mayor?
I believe one sat nearby and one sat in a breakout type office with other employees.
Like an open plan?
No, no, Moore Street had no open plan. It was an old building that was well and truly divided into offices and hallways.
Physically, the two policy advisors.
Yes.
Where were they situated when you arrived at Moore Street?
They were in an adjoining breakout office. Next to the mayor.
What do you mean by breakout?
I guess, well, it is, you've got the mayor's office, you had my office and then you had this almost tiny little cubicle type office, but it was separate. It's own entrance, it's own doorway.
But in the same area as the office and the mayor's?
Yeah, same area. We were all on the same floor. We had about four floors, four, five floors in Moore Street.
So in close proximity to where the mayor's office was?
Oh, yes.
I think we're at the stage where you've got four acting directors and somewhere along the lines before this is finalized, you get the green light to create a director of city futures?
Correct.
Was there somebody acting in that, that role? Was there somebody acting in that, that role?
The, yes, it was Julie Scott. We put, we put her in acting.
And then did you undertake a number of recruitments?
Yes. But that first stage with all six and the acting, five acting and one permanent, that was what was passed to stage one by council. And then we started to recruit.
And as soon as stage one was approved, you started recruiting?
We started recruiting for all four first. And from memory, we actually recruited the four. And then when City Futures came in, City Futures came back in in stage two, from memory now, we then started recruiting for Cities Futures. So Cities Futures was recruited on its own.
And the four recruit, the recruitments for the four permanent directors.
Yes.
You undertook that?
Correct.
Did you engage a recruitment agency to assist you?
Yes, I got procurement to undertake it and Stephen Blackadder was then appointed as the recruiter. He had very good knowledge of, of course, Liverpool council at this stage, having recruited the CEO.
So Mr. Blackadder was involved in, and I'll, excuse me, I'll include City Futures with the recruitment process for all five of those directors?
Yes.
You sat on the panel for all of them?
Correct.
And did you, did Mr. Blackadder sit on the panel?
The panel comprised three, myself, Stephen Blackadder, and then there was, on a number of them, the CEO of Campbelltown City Council and on one of them, the CEO of Hawkesbury City Council. Maybe one or two Hawkesbury.
And that eventually led to all six directorates being headed by a permanent director?
Correct. Yes. Commissioner, can I go back? I indicated that City Futures came in at the second stage. That was incorrect. It actually came in in a governance meeting between stage one and stage two. By the time it went to stage two, all six directors were there, all six names were there and council voted on all six directorates and all six names.
So, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. All six names, did you say?
So when we put it through to council.
Yeah.
To vote on the, I think it actually not only showed the directors' title or plan, but it had the name of the director in there so that they actually knew who the director was.
Of City Futures?
Of the final stage to approval through council.
Including City Futures?
Including City Futures. That's what was dealt with in governance first. But then by the time it got to stage two, I just recall, we'd already had the name.
So stage one gets, gets approved, there's further development at a governance committee meeting, City Futures gets the tick and then it's finally approved at another meeting. But by that stage, the director position has been recruited.
And filled, yes.
Now, at that point of time, was it your understanding that under the Local Government Act, there were provisions which dealt with the issue of the restructure of the council?
Correct.
Was it, again, your understanding that it was generally something that the CEO or general manager had to turn their mind to after an election of the council?
Yes, from memory, it had to occur at the very latest, before the expiration of twelve months of an election.
And at that point, because I think we've heard some evidence that the legislation's recently changed, but it was your role to investigate the restructure and put forward a proposed restructure?
Correct.
And then did it have to be approved by the council?
That was my understanding and that's why we did it in two stages. There was no point proceeding to stage two and doing all the work if council wasn't going to approve stage one. For example, if they said, we don't want six directorates, we only want five, there was no point going any further.
And again, your understanding at that point of time, if after proceeding with that restructure and before you ca, you arrived at the every four years reelection, or sorry, election of the new council, if any period during that time, you were looking at a restructure, was it supposed to be the same process that you would investigate it, formulate what a proposed change, the restructure, but then it would have to formally go to council? For council to approve or reject?
Yes. But my restructure wasn't occurring as a result of an election. That had already occurred, but it wasn't working. It hadn't been fully implemented. So when I came in to do what was becoming my restructure, I had to go through all the same formal processes.
Mr. Ajarka, I want to move to another very broad topic to begin with. Excuse me.
Some more water.
Water?
That would be lovely. Can we get some more water for Mr. Ajarka?
We can immediately help here.
Excellent. That's the assisting part.
Thank you very much.
I'll put a, a, a broad full-time towards the beginning of January 2023. You continue in your role as the CEO, general manager for the whole of 2023?
Yes, to thirty June, yep.
And then you continue?
For the next one, actual year.
And then when we turn to 2024.
Yes.
There are some events in April.
Yes.
Spoiler alert, which leads to you leaving your employment at the council.
Yes.
All right. I want to go back to 2023.
Yes.
During that period, your working relationship with the mayor, Mr. Manoon, can you describe it? So I'm just concentrating on 2023 to begin with.
That's the whole year.
Yes.
So i- in the beginning, I believe it was a good working relationship. We would do a number of matters together. We would discuss a number of matters together. Towards the latter part of 2023, probably from about September onwards, the relationship started to deteriorate.
In the first nine months of your working relationship, were there any particular matters or ways in which the mayor operated that raised concern?
Yes.
And what were they?
So, you know, he'd make comments like, don't forget, you work for me. And I'd make comments, I don't work for you, I work for the council. And he'd say, no, no, you work for me, you have to follow my instructions. And I would say, no, you need to move a motion to council. It needs to be approved by council majority. And then I, as CEO, will follow that directive. I reminded him that those motions usually said, council directs the CEO to do X, then I'm bound to do that. He'd then laugh it off and walk away. But he, he, he did it at least a dozen times during that early period.
Can I just pause there? You're saying there were about a dozen times where you had this interchange along the lines of Mr. Manoon saying, remember you worked for me? And you saying, no, I actually worked for the council?
Yep. On one occasion, on a couple of occasions, don't forget, I put you in this position, to which again, I would reply, no, you didn't. It was a unanimous decision of council that put me in this position.
The interchange that you've identified, which occurred roughly, your recollection, a dozen times, was it
No, he, he, he'd tend to laugh it off and walk away as if he was joking, but I wasn't taking it as a joke. On one occasion, he sent me an SMS from recollection and the SMS quoted a section of the Local Government Act that basically said, you know, I should listen to the mayor, something of that nature. When I looked at the Local Government Act, he quoted, you know, subsection one, but he omitted to quote subsections two, three, four, five, that really made it very clear that I answered to council, not to the mayor. And so when I went back with that reply, I think he, there was no more response from him.
Concentrating on 2023 again, the difference of opinion that you've outlined, did it ever crystallise in a particular issue or matter that arose? Where in a sense, there was, you work for me, you do what I say and you are maintaining your position that, no, I work, I'm answerable or I worked for the council?
Yeah. But one of the biggest, I'll use the word discussions, but at times it would turn into arguments. He said, he would actually name certain employees that he considered should be terminated. And I would say, no, that's not going to happen. It's not how we work. I mean, there were probity issues, there were proper governance issues. If you've got a formal complaint, you put in a complaint, we'll investigate it. And you go, no, I just want you to get rid of them. The one that he repeated on numerous occasions was the one who years earlier, before I started, had used the comment, put pork on, put pork on the fork. He just would not let go of that. But that was one example. Other times, he would say to me, you know, the employees cutting the grass are useless, we should get rid of them all and we should just simply replace them with contractors. We should just, another time would be, you know, these bathrooms are disgusting. He'd send me photos of them. The employees are useless, you should replace them with a contractor. And I'd go and check it out. And interestingly, it was a contractor that was cleaning the bathroom and not our employees. So as soon as I'd come back with an appropriate answer, he'd just leave it alone. There'd never be a comeback. So they were the type of examples that he was using.
So from those examples, it appears that the mayor would raise an issue and as you said, demanding termination of employees. You would respond with, no, we're not doing that. And then, in a sense, the, the issue would die down.
Correct.
The particular employee with the pork on the fork, that was a placard or something like that?
So the whole pork on the fork started first with the then councillor, Peter Rostewski, I believe doing it at a council meeting. And then some of the employees picked up, had operations with it. When I had arrived, it was still a very sensitive issue and it was still happening. And it was one of the matters that I was able to resolve, working with the USU and the employee delegates to put an end to it. And it actually stopped to the credit of the employees.
Was it your understanding that an employee involved in that, his employment was terminated? But then there was an application to Fair Work Commission or Industrial Relations Commission about that?
I'm aware that the comment was again made. I hadn't heard it. I was in the chamber on the time that I was, the motion was passed to suspend me.
That's in April 2024?
In April 2024. And I understand then that had been, that started all over again. I'm not sure what the final outcome was.
But you had left your role as CEO by the time that that arose again?
My, yes. And the other reason I'm aware of it is that it was put in the letters of my termination and was, and I was told about it. I was somehow blamed for it, but I had nothing to do with it.
I was asking you about issues where the difference in opinion as to your role crystallized in 2023. And you've given examples of raising termination of employment of different employees. Moving away from employees, did it arise in any other circumstance or matter?
Yeah. The communications team became a very hot discussion. It became clear to me that some of the, I was receiving complaints from some of the Labour and independent councillors that whenever photographs were taken at events, and they were all in the photographs, the Labour councillors or the independents were being cut out and only the mayor and the liberal councillors would appear in the photo. So when I brought in the communications team to say, why was this happening? They were the instructions of the mayor. I made it clear to them, they follow my instructions, not the instructions of the mayor. And that was to stop. The mayor and I had some arguments over that. He then started to indicate that he wanted at least two of the communications team to be working directly with him, in addition to the other four employees he had. Again, I told him, that's not happening. It's not in the budget. The communications team is there for the entire council, for all councillors. It's not just there for you.
After that conversation with the mayor, did you observe a change in the behaviour of those members of the communication team?
Yes.
And while you were CEO, there was no formal inclusion of any members of the communication team in that group of employees really in operation, reporting to the mayor?
Correct.
Having received those complaints, did you say from other councillors?
Yes.
Were they made directly to you?
Yes, I received a phone call from a council. They'd come into my office saying, you promised us you'd play with a straight bat. Why is this happening? And I'd say, I wasn't aware of it until you told me and I'll put a stop to it. And I did.
And once you became aware of the complaints, did you look into them?
Yes.
And how did you do that?
So I would bring the, well, first of all, I had the photos in front of me.
I see.
And secondly, I was, on a number of occasions, I was there and I knew what photo was taken. And you could almost tell who was cut out at the ends.
So you saw the photos yourself?
And then on one occasion, the, I, I went to one of the communications team and noticed that she was only taking photographs of the mayor and the liberal councillors. And when I said to her, you haven't taken any photographs of the Labour councils and the independency, that's when she told me, oh, the mayor told me just to take them of the liberal councils. And I said, that's just not happening.
This was in 2023?
Yes.
About doing the best you can. I know it's a couple of years ago now, but about what period are we talking?
I mean, it started a little bit in the beginning and then I believe I put a stop to it. But then it really started again towards the latter part of 2023.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ajarka, I missed that. You said that it started up again, that behaviour towards the end of 2023?
Probably from September onwards, when things were starting to get better.
As you indicated, a little bit more tense, the relationship between you and the mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner, I know at the time.
Yes, Mr. Ajarka, we're going to take a short break. And if you wouldn't mind being back ready to go just before ten to twelve, would be most great.
Thank you.
I'm watching to ten to twelve.
Are you there, mate?
Hello, can you hear me?
Are you there, are you there, Michael?
Hang on, I'm going to try something, I've got to, I'm going to log out and then come back.
Okay.
Because I can't hear you.
That's okay, well, why don't you just give us an update? No? Okay, sorry, we've lost Michael there. Well, look, quite an interesting session, no doubt. Wow, some really explosive testimony there from John Ojarka this morning. And I don't want to take anything away from Michael, because Michael's been in there all morning and has been there while evidence has been given. They were about 10 minutes late to get kicked off today, before, before kickoff today. And the reason for that was there was just a lot of, you know, a lot of people trying to get into to watch. Michael, are you there? Can you hear us? Hang on, mate.
Hello, BJ, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. Unfortunately, I can't hear you.
Okay. Give us a bit of an update, Michael.
I don't know what's going on with my sound.
Are you there?
But in any case, let's keep going. So I'm here on the corner of Bridge Street and Macquarie Street, there's a nice statue in the background, and I'll hold the phone the right way up so we don't go sideways again. What an interesting morning with Mr. Ojarka in the stands. So they went through the basics, they certainly covered, you know, his previous career, the surrounds about how he came to become asked for the, into the position of CEO, some of the structuring. What I found most interesting, I don't know about you, BJ, was body language. So just watching the body language was very, very interesting. Just give me a thumbs up if you think that was the case as well. Yes. We're communicating through sign language at the moment. But yeah, I think it's the, this, the next section, we've got on a quick break. We'll have obviously more information and through, through to one. So, you know, we're basically coming back around 12 o'clock. One of the things that I've found out definitely is that there is a five-minute time delay from when things actually start in the courtroom to when the feed actually commences. And so that's why I was sitting in the room waiting for the, for the live stream to commence, which was only like a few metres away from the actual board gate, from the courtroom. And things were going on and I wasn't getting any, any feed until five minutes later. So that means that our live stream is also five minutes delayed. And I was sitting, when everybody, when, when they had a break and people were walking past in the hallway, I'm going, what's going on? Five minutes later, the feed stops. So I say, stay tuned, we'll keep recording, BJ will keep recording and we'll keep live streaming this through till, from when, when it returns, from when the court, or commission public hearings commence again, just before 12, through to 1pm. 1pm is the lunch break, scheduled lunch break from 1pm until 2pm. And that will be, we will have a break at that point in time. And then we'll be back for the afternoon session from 2 o'clock to 4 o'clock. So BJ, I'll hand it over to you and you can fill in our listeners, viewers and followers. Make sure that you, we, we also have a, well, we're live streaming through, not only through Facebook, but also through YouTube. And yeah, we're doing the best we can to bring you all the news as it happens and as it develops. I was downstairs first thing this morning when John Ojarka, I was having a chat to the photographer from the Sydney Morning Herald, and John Ojarka popped round the corner. She managed to get a few snaps off this morning, so I'm sure that there'll be an article in the Sydney Morning Herald possibly this afternoon. Because I know that they are following the proceedings also via live stream. So yeah, nice, nicely despite, I'm going to go pop down and grab a cup of tea or something. And hand you back over to BJ, and I'll be watching on, on the stream myself. Talk to you later.
That was Michael there, giving us an up-to-date report there from Sydney. And he's done such a great job getting out there and getting in there nice and early this morning so that we could find out what was actually going on in the courtroom. And just to cover those messages again this morning, so in the courthouse, it's an absolute, it's a, it's a lockout apparently, well, not a lockout, but it's very full. There's obviously a bit of construction going on in the area as well, which has caused, you know, a few of the microphones, people have been saying that the microphones throughout the day, sometimes we're missing words and what have you. It's unfortunately nothing to do with our stream, it's how they mic it up at the other end, but we do our best. As Michael pointed out very well, John Ojarka arrived about 10 minutes before proceedings. There was a couple of photographers on site that got snaps. The overflow room was also quite full today. They announced the schedule that the hearings would commence at 10 o'clock and go through till 11.30. They've gone slightly over time this morning, I think they're coming back in around about 10, 15 minutes. And then they'll go for another hour, and then as close to 1 o'clock as possible, just depending on where questioning gets to, they will then take the lunch break, which is from 1 to 2. And then from 2 to 4, we'll be back with the PM session. So the way we split the streams up is we continue to broadcast through this short break, this shorter break, right through to the lunch, and we call that obviously the AM session. And then the one, the session, two hours from 2 o'clock to 4 o'clock, we call the PM session. So if you're searching for them for the previous days, please go onto YouTube and I'll just push that, that link up to you now. So it's, there you go, if you navigate to that address there, or even if you search for Liverpool Council live streams, you'll definitely find it. But there you will find not only today's session, what's streaming right now, but yesterday and the day before. And as I said, they're split up by AM and PM. That's the best way to view it, especially if you want to watch it on a TV or a bigger device. Other than that, we are streaming this live on Facebook, on the local Pulse page, as well as the radio page at 89.3, which is where we have a, a local community radio show. Michael and I broadcast that live from Big Street each Thursday morning from 9am and for a couple of hours. And then obviously, as these hearing weeks are on, we go a little bit longer and we broadcast over the radio what's been going on as part of these hearings. And this morning's session was quite telling, there was a lot being asked. I really don't want to elaborate too much, I'm a bit scared to elaborate too much, just based on how important his testimony is going to be. I think it really, our job is to get the word out as, as far and wide as we possibly can. And, you know, I'd certainly encourage, you know, if you, if you're out and about in the community and you, you know, you're with a club or you're with the, you know, people and friends, just mention that obviously the hearings are on and there is a live stream. I think the more of us that are actively involved in our local community and our local council at the moment, will actually ensure that as we come out of these inquiries, we're actually a stronger, you know, a stronger society for having gone through it. And I think it's really important that, you know, people really understand what's going on at Liverpool Council, right or wrong, so that we can, you know, set ourselves up to win in the future. And that's what it's all about, isn't it? Is that, you know, we want to have, you know, with a brand new airport coming next year, there's a lot of opportunity for our families, our, our businesses and our community. And, you know, there's a lot of things we need to work on as part of that process. And, you know, it, it's about balancing those priorities, but the, the longer we're worrying about these sort of things, or someone's foot getting trodden on, or someone, you know, 115 code of conducts, you know, these things do not help us and doesn't help our local councillor out. And look, you know, certainly something that Michael and I spend a lot of time trying to communicate out. We're not, you know, we don't want to necessarily, we let you know what we think, but it's about getting the information out to you so you can make your own informed decisions as a community. I think the main thing is you get involved. There is a council meeting coming up this evening at 6 o'clock, it's at 50 Scott Street in Liverpool, it's on the first level of the council building, the new council building that's right in the middle of, you know, in Scott Street, if anyone knows that well, you'll see it. If not, just Google it up. There will be wraps on tonight for the first time, so they're going to be giving, rather than just tea and biscuits. So look, certainly a good opportunity for you to come and introduce and just see what goes on at council, understand the process of what council goes through. And, you know, I think the more that you spend time in it, it also means that everyone gets sharper. The biggest problem that we've had, I feel, in this process is that no one's been watching. And, you know, for the last year and a, year and a half, I've been watching a little bit more closely. Prior to that, I was probably just like 90% of ratepayers out there that just wanted to pay their rates, you know, get their rubbish picked up, and that was fine. That's all I wanted to know about Liverpool City Council. But, you know, what has evolved, yeah, since then, since what, and the more I listen to, the more I learn about, the more I talk to people that work at council or worked at council, the more, you know, you can really see that things aren't working well. And when you go across to another council like Fairfield, where things are running quite well, under a strong mayor, strong leadership, strong management, you know, how much further you can move your community forward in a short amount of time. Now, some say that that's an unfair comparison that we make towards Liverpool and Fairfield. And they say the reason that's unfair is because Liverpool council is growing significantly. There's a lot more growth happening in Liverpool than there is in Fairfield. And that is true, there is a lot more growth, you know, out to, to Austral, and we do take, you know, when the mayor, when Mayor Ned Manon says, you know, that we take a lot of the people coming from immigration, that is, that's a true statement. And that presents a lot of, you know, a lot of challenges that other councils don't have when you're a growth council and, you know, it, it gets further, you, you have a lot of different cultures and nationalities living, you know, in the same area. It gets tougher to communicate messages, to be inconsistent, you know, to represent everybody in the community. It's a challenge in Liverpool for the best of us. But we have to do it, we have to have a decent crack at it. And we can't even have a decent crack at it until all of this stuff is dealt with properly and sorted so that we can move forward. And I think that, you know, that's what every resident wants, is we just want this done properly. So Michael and I will continue to advocate for that, for, you know, hearing this message, whatever message you, you need to hear. And I hope you come along to, to, to council meetings. As I said, 6 o'clock tonight will be a good one, and come and learn what it's all about, have a bite to eat, it's nice and warm there. You know, come in and hear what councillors have to say, hear what the directors have to say. That's where it starts. And, you know, when you can, as I said, go back, listen to these hearings if you can. I really appreciate your time and listening to me for the last bang on, for the last three or four minutes. If you'd like to hear me bang on more, tune in tomorrow at 89.3 from 9am. And we, as we take the pulse on Liverpool and Fairfield, we've got some great news out of Fairfield this week. And we take your calls, and we'd love to hear from you, because that's what it's all about. So it's 9822893, that's 9822893. Call us after 9.30 tomorrow morning, we'd love to hear what you've got to say, if not about the hearings, about your suburb, what's going on, what things haven't been done that need to be done, what's frustrating you, what do you want to give thanks for? Maybe there's something that, you know, council's doing that you want to give them a pat on the back for. I mean, great, give us a call, you know, 9822893. I'm going to leave you with this hold screen, I'll play the, I think we have got a bit of an ad here for the council meeting tonight, so I'll just play that one quickly. And thanks for listening and we will, we won't be joining you again for the rest of day, but the afternoon session will start from 2pm today. So just hang on and the live stream will be back in the next five, 10 minutes. So just hang on and, uh, the live stream will be back in the next five, ten minutes.
Evidence from the chief financial officer, Mr. Nadan, which included, I think it was in two thousand and twenty-two, he was on holidays and received on his mobile a, a, a call from the mayor asking about possible financing of, uh, the purchase of a, of property. Um, that direct contact between the mayor and an employee, albeit the chief financial officer, but not a director. Did you, um, observe that during your, your time as C E O?
I'm aware that there were contacts with staff that I've spoken to him about saying, and other councillors, that this really needed to stop. The appropriate method was to go either to my shop or to the relevant director. And if you can do it as a councillor request, that was the best way of doing it.
And the councillor request would involve that email address of councillor support?
The thing with the councillor request as opposed to simply going and talking to staff is there'd be no record of it. There needed to be a record of it. And the staff knew that appropriate property matters would be dealt with in that regard. And if it got to a stage where it needed to be escalated to me, the councillor request would escalate it to me if it couldn't be dealt with by a director.
You spoke about the introduction of a policy.
Yes.
Was that around July twenty twenty-three?
It was about mid-year. I can't remember the exact date, but I can recognise it.
Would you bring up document O L G dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot zero two seven six? And that could be livestreamed. Now, that's the first page of a policy councillor access to information and interaction with staff policy.
Yes.
Could we move down the first page towards the bottom? You'll see adopted, I think it's the twenty-sixth of July twenty twenty-three.
It would have been adopted at a council meeting.
And I can take you through the document, but is that your, um, recollection of the policy that you just referred to?
Yes.
I'll take you through to paragraph six, which begins at the bottom of page underscore zero 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 five. This is under the heading inappropriate interactions?
I'll just read it for a sec.
Yes.
Yes.
And that's setting out, as it's stated, based on the code of conduct, certain interactions that are inappropriate?
Yes.
And for example, B, uh, it starts off with, and we'll turn to attachment A, the mayor and councillors approaching members of staff other than specifically identified in attachment A.
Yes.
And then in B, councillors approaching staff and other staff organisations to discuss individual or operational staff matters, other than matters relating to broader workforce policy, um, grievances, workplace investigations and disciplinary matters.
Yes.
Uh, and if we go down to, um, I think it's a next to A. This gives more detail about the possible interactions between councillors and council staff?
I, I think that's, that's, there were the previous versions. So the, uh, the one that we brought in, in July twenty-three was the last one. But they were previous, um, you know, it started in two thousand and two, for example.
All right. Would, would you go to a page underscore zero 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 eight? And you can see there attachment A?
Correct.
And this was the table that I wanted to draw your attention to. The way that it's structured, it identi-, it gives identification of what the request is.
Yes.
From whom approval must be given.
Yes.
How it's to be requested, how it's to be provided, any restrictions, and then record keeping requirements.
Yes.
Um, so for example, with the first one, access to documents, um, approval would have to be gained from you?
Or the public officer.
Excuse me. Uh, the, and then the information is made in writing or verbally, but again, there's some kind of file note to be kept of this?
Yeah, the, uh, the councillor support team, it was a whole team, I think from memory, there were about five or six employees around. Action, and they were required to keep complete records of this.
And it's got how the information is to be provided, restrictions on the information, and then importantly, record keeping requirements.
Yes.
Uh, after the introduction of this policy in July twenty twenty-three, did you observe whether the mayor's tendency at times to approach members of staff directly changed and complied with the policy?
Nothing came to my attention in, in the month or two, but then again, by September, matters were coming to my attention. Not only the member, uh, the mayor, but a number of councillors.
Were also not complying with the policy?
Yes, and I had to talk to them.
Uh, which councillors were they?
Uh, councillor Richard Amun was probably the most that I was receiving complaints about. And councillor Mel Goodman was the other one.
Still concentrating on this period from roughly January to September twenty twenty-three, uh, were there any other issues that were emerging in your rela-, working relationship with the mayor that was either of concern or potential concern?
Yeah, I mean, in, in the beginning, when I would sit next to the mayor in the council meeting, I mean, it was, as far as I was concerned, my job to assist the mayor in how he conducted the meeting, to ensure that they complied with the meeting, uh, code of practice. And the way I would do that would be to slip a little handwritten note to him if I thought that he was going outside the appropriate contact. Um, the best example is that the mayor would, um, bully one of the councillors. It'd be very derogatory to one of the councillors during a council meeting. And I'd pass a note saying, I think you're going too far, you should stop. Um, in the beginning, he just accepted that and he would move on. Towards the end, if I slipped the paper to him by September, October, he'd literally throw the paper back at me.
Uh, you identified that, um, your note would be prompted by a derogatory comment towards a councillor. Could you give an example?
In, in the beginning, it would be, it was councillor Hegarty. Um, he would continually have a go at him. Then when councillor Hegarty left, it was councillor Kellyander. And then where the real problems arose is that when councillor Green, uh, announced that she'd be the mayoral candidate at the next election, it was councillor Green. Uh, she came to see me on a couple of occasions, saying that, look, she's had enough, she's going to put in a formal complaint against him.
Uh, the election where councillor Green stood for mayor, that was the election in September twenty-four?
Yes.
The derogatory comments towards her, can you assist the inquiry in giving an example?
I mean, there were always very clever, uh, comments, very sarcastic comments, where it'd be basically, you know, you, you've been a councillor long enough, you should know the, uh, the rules. You've been a councillor long enough, you know, that seems to be a very stupid comment. You've, you've, you've been around long enough, uh, you know, it's not my job to be teaching you how to behave. But he would do it, you know, in a very screaming, uh, at times. If the councillors were to argue back with him, he would immediately stand up. And then he would remind them that if he's standing up, they had to sit down and be quiet. They weren't allowed to talk anymore. So he really would bully them in that way.
Um, and the example that you just gave, standing up, is it part of the procedure at council if the mayor stands?
Yes.
A councillor speaking must stop speaking and either resume their seat or?
And correct, very similar to state parlour.
Still in this period, January to about September twenty twenty-three, I'm going to ask you some questions about an announcement that was made on about the seventeenth of March twenty twenty-three. And this was an announcement by the mayor and, um, accompanied by his wife, who was standing for election for a state seat within the Liverpool area.
It'd be the seat of Holsworthy.
Uh, would you bring up document O L G dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot zero zero four eight, please? This is a newspaper article from the Sydney Morning Herald. Uh, oh, sorry. It's coming up. Yes, please.
What's the date of this?
Uh, there doesn't appear to be a date. We think it was the eighteenth, the next day.
Eighteenth of, sorry.
Oh, sorry, March twenty twenty-three.
Eighteenth of March.
And can you see there, it commences with a liberal mayor who backed his wife's bid to become a party candidate in South West Sydney, has promised that his council and the coalition would jointly fund fifty million dollars to sports facility, despite the commitment not being put to councillors. Um, now, there's, there's a reference to, in the, the third paragraph in that column, uh, to a package to upgrade fields and develop a new aquatic centre was announced by the duo at a sports club.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and is, was it known as, um, the proposal to fund, I think, the Hammondville Pool?
Yeah, the Hammondville Precinct, uh, pool.
And I think, um, in the next column, there is, uh, a reference to, uh, the deputy mayor, councillor Hadid, um, who says, uh, while the council had resolved...
Sorry.
Um.
Yes, got it.
He states that no specific plans or costs have been proposed. We haven't seen anything from council staff, and he said that of course they, um, were still working on it. Um, the, can I just pause with the announcement on the seventeenth of March by Mr. Manon and his wife? Did you know that was going to be announced?
No.
Um, had there been any discussion, uh, between you and the mayor leading up to that announcement about a proposal for a new pool at Hammondville?
Not with me, no.
We'll just also bring up document I N Q dot zero one one dot zero zero one dot zero 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 five. And that's another, oh.
We need your screen.
Yes.
Is this a, the same article or a different one?
Oh, just to confirm, on this copy of the article that we have, it clearly indicates that it was an article published on the eighteenth of March. But if there's no issue about that, we probably...
The parties have the document ID, and if there is some issue, no doubt, that'll be raised with me. Could, could I just, um, Mr. Ajaka, I know the document's been taken away, but you were taken to a section of the article that, I think it was councillor Hadid had referred to a resolution of council to build a pool in Hanville. Do you remember seeing that in the article?
I saw that in the article.
Just pause for a moment. Do, do you know what that was a reference to?
No, look, I, I can't recall a reference to a pool. I know that we were doing work on the Hammondville Precinct at that time. If it included a pool, I can't recall.
All right. And, um, just for my benefit, what's the Hammondville Precinct?
So the Hammondville Precinct i- 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 is an area that, in a sense, surrounds the sporty's club. Uh, it consists of a number of fields, uh, where various, uh, games, in particular for youth, uh, are played. Um, it consists of two or three very substantial, uh, ground floor car parks, and it consists of another number of fields.
Outdoor facilities?
Outdoor facilities.
Thank you.
Would we go back to the article which was zero zero one dot zero zero one dot zero zero four eight? Uh, the commissioner asked you about some of, uh, councillor Hadid's comments reported in the article.
Hmm.
But I'll take you also to, in that second column, there is a reference to councillor Rhodes.
Yes, councillor Caress Rhodes, yes.
Saying tired sport facilities at Hammondville had long been an issue, that there had been absolutely no figures discussed at council.
Yes.
And it's only a promise if the Liberal Party win the election.
Yeah. So for any matter of this nature to come to council for a proper council determination that could be made, it has to tick a number of boxes. And one of those is that fully costing financial, as to where the funds, but not only what will it cost, but where do the funds come from?
In substance, putting a business plan for the expenditure.
Or, or, and all of the property aspects of it.
Still on that article, at the bottom of the middle column, you can see a reference to councillor Calleander saying that funding of that magnitude has never come before council.
And I'm not aware of it ever coming, as I said, it'd have to be, in a sense, a business case, if I can use that term, clearly showing where the funding comes from, what the funding will be, how it's going to be constructed. You can't make a decision on something like this on the run.
And then in the final column, there seems to be a reference that there was as part of the many applications by the council for the West Invest grants.
Correct.
There was some application which involved a new pool in Hammondville, but that application for a grant was rejected.
That, from my recollection, yeah, that wasn't a builder pool, that was to improve an existing pool.
But again, that particular West Invest grant application wasn't successful.
Correct.
The council was successful, I think, with about five others, but not with that one.
Substantial five others. But even if the council had been successful on this one, you could not take the money from this, from council, to put it into Hammerville. It could only be used if it was successful for council.
Now, as the article states, this seems to be an announcement which was also to assist the mayor's wife, Tina Ayed, in her standing for election for a state seat.
Correct.
She was successful, but she was representing the Liberal Party that wasn't re-elected.
Correct.
And is it your understanding that this idea of some joint money coming from the council and also from a re-elected Liberal government in Macquarie Street did not come to fruition?
Correct. It would be very unlikely the Labour government would come in and provide the money.
But, and this, I just want to establish this context for some future issues I want to ask you about. There is this announcement of a new pool at Hammondville, which obviously the mayor has adopted and wishes to pursue.
Yes, but not adopted at a formal council meeting, but the appropriate.
No, I'm sorry, I was talking purely the mayor standing alone at this particular launch, putting that forward, but to your knowledge, never adopted, never raised, never adopted at a council meeting.
Not that I'm aware of.
Now, before I turn to September twenty twenty three, in the lead up to that date, is there anything else that you wish to raise about either your dealings with the mayor or anything about council?
Nothing that comes to mind, I mean, something may come to mind if something else comes up, but at this stage, I can't think of anything.
At the, towards the beginning of your evidence, you identified around September twenty twenty three as a turning point in your work relationship with the mayor.
Yes.
What started to occur from September twenty twenty three?
He really became obsessed with a number of matters. The first one was the building of the swimming pool. He was continually going about the fact that if the pool was not built, his wife might end up losing the seat of Holsworthy. And I would continually say to him that you cannot be bringing this up. This is, council can't be here, you can't be here with the aim of ensuring that your wife wins the next state election. This is just nonsense, it's got to stop. He also became, he started to panic a little bit about holding on to the mayorship at the next council election. He was really worried that matters would arise. And we, again, I'd be saying to him, you can't be using council resources to in somehow rather improve your standing. And this is again where the arguments with the communications team started to occur, that he wanted to make sure that Labour were cut out of any media. The other areas that were affecting him were in relation to the budget. He, you know, was absolutely adamant that the budget had to be in the black. And, you know, again, we'd say, yes, the budget will be, we're working on it, we're doing our best to get it in there. At the same time, he kept talking about certain projects that he was hoping to get up and running, which would add pressure on the budget. And the swimming pool was the perfect example. So it was matters of that nature that really started to show that it was putting some pressure on. But the really big problems started to occur when all of the social media would be, was coming out from two gentlemen in particular, Peter Rostewski, who is now a councillor on council, and a gentleman by the name of Michael Angelovick. They were continually out there in social media attacking the mayor. And he always wanted me to take some action on it, but there was really no action I could take. The issue with Michael Angelovick led to the mayor making a comment in a public meeting about Michael Angelovick, and Michael Angelovick sending a notice that he was going to commence defamation proceedings.
All right, we might turn to that in a minute. Can I just revisit your comment about the issues about use of the communication team arose again?
Yes.
Was your observation that the conduct that had been complained of and that you observed earlier of things like photos only of the mayor at a council event, or cutting out other rivals, political rivals in photos of events, did that restart?
Yes, and the other thing that had occurred with the communications is we started to argue. He was insisting that I move the entire communications back to me as CEO, as opposed to being under a director. And when I asked him, that makes no sense, why would I do that? He said, if they're under you, they'll be available to me, all of them will be available to me. And I said, well, that's not going to happen, they can't be available just to you, they've got to be available to council. And we argued quite a number of times on that, and I just said, look, I'm not doing that. We've been through a restructure, it's been ticked off by everyone, it's been approved by everyone. The employees, the unions, council have all taken off, I'm not going to start to take it apart again.
When you as CEO were communications ever moved back to directing, sorry, reporting to the CEO directly?
Not when I was there.
Did you take any action with the communications team about the favoritism in the photos?
I spoke to the director who spoke to the team and assured me. At one stage, the main two parties to the communication, to employ the communication team, really started to have issues. They felt very conflicted, and I think from memory, one of them took time off on stress leave, and then the other one, I think, as well, and eventually they were paid out.
Do you recall their names?
Jennifer Havler, who was there before my time, and Marie Alice.
And when you say both of them were paid out, their employment ended, but again, by agreement which involves some ex-grancher payment?
I believe what happened was one of them, if not both of them, actually went off on stress leave, and then eventually it all.
You referred to the demand that the budget be in the black, but there was also pressure to finance particular projects, and you used as an example the Hammondville Pool project.
Yep.
Do you recall any other particular projects that the mayor was pressing?
The mayor was working with councillor Caress Rhodes in relation to an animal shelter. And again, I was trying to find ways of finding that funding by seeing if we could do a a joint adventure with a large organisation where they would run it and we would look at somehow or rather building it together, but I don't believe it ever got off the ground, we just couldn't find the funding.
Would you just excuse me for a minute? You also referred to social media by two gentlemen who were not councillors, were constituents, making postings on social media that were critical of the mayor?
Yes, and likewise, the mayor was obsessed with social media. He would continually be on social media, making, and on quite a number of occasions which caused, again, problems, he'd be attacking staff on social media.
Can I pause there? When you say social media, was there a particular platform?
I can't remember which of the platforms it was, but they would come to my attention.
Is it the case that Liverpool council itself has a Facebook page?
Correct, which is run by the communications team.
But individual councillors, including the mayor, can have their own Facebook page, which is known as, for example, councillor Jane Smith. But it's not, in a sense, controlled or operated by the council.
Correct, it's their own personal.
It's.
Their own personal.
And as I just asked, the council itself has no control over those personal Facebook pages?
Unfortunately, no.
All right, even though it's under the kind of name or umbrella as of councillor Jane Smith. And your comment about the mayor engaging in social media where he's either responding to other postings or making comments about the staff, was it your understanding that was, that was on his, either Mayor Manoon or councillor Manoon's Facebook page?
Correct.
The ones critical of staff, they occurred during twenty twenty three?
I'm sorry.
You spoke about the mayor making postings which were critical of members of staff?
Yes.
That occurred during twenty twenty three?
And I believe early twenty twenty four.
And what type of postings were they?
For example, there'd be a situation where he might drive past and see lawn not cut. He'd take a photo of it, and then he posted about how pathetic the staff are that they're not cutting the lawn on the roads. Sometimes we'd, I'd investigate it and discover that it wasn't even a council road, it was a state government road, so it's not even meant to be our responsibility. So, you know, the staff would become incredibly upset by that. If he was criticised in any way by either a Peter Rostewski or a Lou Angelovick or anyone else, he would immediately say, you know, yeah, the problem is we've got incompetent staff, they're not dealing with the matter. But that would be his answer. So again, that was causing a huge amount of conflict.
Can I turn to the issue that you started to discuss, which was a particular posting that was made by Mr Angelovich, was it?
I think it's pronounced Angelovich, but I'm not sure.
Which then led to the mayor making a particular comment at a community forum?
Correct, so I believe Angelovich asked the mayor a question as to why the CEO had instructed staff not to respond to his emails. And Ned Manoon had indicated that, you know why, Michael, because you're a racist. And so Angelovich commenced defamation proceedings on that.
Can I just clarify that?
When I say defamation, he issued that notice that you must issue beforehand.
Yes, is it your understanding that he never actually filed a statement of claim in a court?
No.
But got a lawyer to write, I think.
Concerns notice.
Yes, thank you. Notice to the mayor.
Correct, which we responded to.
And as part of responding to that, did you or somebody else within the council look at the issue of if defamation proceedings were taken against the mayor in respect of that statement, whether it would be covered by any insurance policy of the council?
Yes, I did. And I did by asking corporate services to look at it, and the answer was, yes, he's covered by insurance. And then I met with the insurance broker, if I can use that term, and that was confirmed as to what the procedures would be.
Ultimately, did that issue, the indemnity that would be given to the mayor under the council insurance policy, was that eventually raised at a council meeting?
Yes, so you were required under the policy to put it to council. Council had to vote to say, yes, the mayor should be indemnified, and on that basis, the insurance would take effect. But there were certain conditions that also had to be adhered to.
Do you mean that it required a council resolution for the council to make a claim on the policy?
More that the council resolution, that the council would indemnify the mayor, and on that basis, the insurance policy would be activated.
Would you bring up document I N Q dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot zero, sorry, one one zero two? I'm sorry, I did speak quickly. Zero zero one dot zero zero one dot one one zero two. Yes. First page of the document, Mr Ajaka, minutes of the ordinary meeting held on twenty seven March twenty twenty four?
Yes.
Would you go through to page underscore zero zero four zero?
Yes.
We might have. Whoops, I cut a bit.
Bottom of page thirty nine. We scroll up in the document.
No, I think it's towards the bottom of zero zero forty, it's got legal expenses. No, no, no.
Yeah, it starts at two B.
Sorry, but I'm just trying to see where the item itself is.
Would you stop there, please?
I see, there's a motion to go into closer.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
And then there's a closed session. And then if you, when the, and it's the subject legal expenses. And then after the closed session, the council's decision is then recorded. And if we can move
Yes.
to that, you've got an agreement to reimburse the mayor's legal expenses on a solicitor client basis in connection with the claim to a maximum of $50,000. And then some reference to the council's civic expenses and facilities policy. And that's carried.
Yep.
And was it your understanding that the payment to a maximum of $50,000 was something to do with the excess under the insurance policy?
Correct. So once council agreed to indemnify, you had, the council was responsible for the first $50,000, which is one of the conditions I mentioned. But then the insurance would pay everything above that, and I don't think there was even a limit. So for winning for millions, the insurance company would pay the balance. We were only liable up to a maximum of $50,000. We were also liable for the first up to $50,000.
All right, what's the distinction you do?
So if, for example, if no action was commenced and the total legal bill was $10,000, and we only paid $10,000, we didn't pay the $50.
Oh, all right.
And of course, the insurance company paid nothing.
Yes.
But if it came to $100,000, we paid $50,000.
Yeah, the deductible was $50,000, after which the cover kept in, I understand.
But it wasn't, you had to pay $50,000 whether it was used or not.
Yes, I understand.
Now, that was passed, and we should note that the mayor did not participate.
No, he had to leave. He had a conflict.
Now, that was dated around the 27th of March. After that matter, I'm sorry, after that was passed, until about the 23rd of April, had the mayor raised any issue with you about that?
I can't remember the date, but an article in the paper appeared, in one of the papers, and I think even some social media, about how council was paying $50,000. And the mayor became incredibly upset about that. And then approached me, and this is where another one of those arguments started to make a claim that he never agreed to this, he didn't understand this, he never agreed to have a solicitor appointed to represent him and respond. This was an illegal, invalid motion as far as he was concerned. I disputed all of that. And then we responded to him in writing. I ended up, I think it was Mr. Portelli, who provided him a detailed response of all of the steps that had been taken, including his steps.
Can I just pause there? Would document INQ dot zero three nine dot zero zero one dot zero 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 one be brought up, please? Yes.
The Telegraph, that's it.
You can see the headline, Rate Payers Could Reimburse Liverpool Mayor Ned Manon's Legal Fees Up to $50,000.
Correct.
I think our note says that that was published on about the 23rd of April. Yes, there it is.
It's under the byline.
And your evidence is the interest in social media and also the Daily Telegraph writing this article, the mayor then became agitated about the issue? You spoke about him raising a number of issues and eventually Mr. Portelli dealt with it?
I asked him to. And I think from memory, I looked at the email before it went out and approved it.
And would document INQ dot zero zero three dot zero zero one dot zero 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 four be brought up? And that can be live streamed? Before it's brought up, maybe if we should just pause?
Just in the room?
I think it's all right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, if you move towards the bottom of that page, can you see there's an email from Mr. Copy to Betty Busani?
Yes.
Confidential motion, legal matter?
Yep.
And then it sets out the process that was followed in the preparation of the council report and resolution you referred to?
Yep.
And maybe if we can continue?
Yep. And then there's a next chapter. No, that was in response to the mayor's email where we started to claim that it wasn't, I believe, an appropriate motion, if I can just look at that.
Is that on screen for you?
Yes. I had a conflict, did not participate, having read the resolution, we started, it does not make sense to me. From my understanding, much was about the excess which showed that cover. After we were first expensed, it seems to be repair only stating, it should be very poly draft and actually doesn't cover the issues of insurance there. And like, well, I know that I've not engaged council, not asked council to reimburse my expenses. I know my advice was not to respond to the concerns notice. And this is now being brought to my attention by media. So again, not only in this, but he claimed with me verbally that he never once asked for it to be dealt with the insurance, nor did he want lawyers appointed for him, nor did he want a response to the claims notice.
All right.
Portelli's response was in relation to that.
And as we saw in the email, Mr. Portelli refers to a table that was?
And then it shuts, it sets out all the steps.
All right. And I don't know if we can, need to bring that up, but I'll note that's document INQ dot zero zero three dot zero zero one dot zero 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 four. And the table appears at page underscore zero 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 five. Maybe if you keep on going down?
Oh, we're there.
There it is.
So that's the table?
Yes.
And and you can see there's, oh, excuse me for a minute.
Commissioner, can I just check my instructions? But there might be a part claim about LPP, about the reference to McCabe's advice.
All right, can we just scroll up off this page?
Thank you.
Take it off the screen and pull us for a moment. We're okay. We'll operate it for a moment. I'll take the document down and see what happens.
I'm not speaking in the microphone. I'll get it right on the last day.
Commissioner, that section of the McCabe's, which has reference to a McCabe's advice, we sought, make a claim for that in another document, which, which you did make an order redacting. And that document?
What document ID is that?
LCC dot zero zero eight dot zero zero one dot zero zero five one.
I'm not saying I didn't, it's just not one that's on my list.
I've got it as a pending determination, which might be the reason.
Okay. All right. Can we manage the difficulty, Miss McDonald? Do you need to take the witness to that part of the document?
I'm about to ask about one or two other questions, which I will not go to the McCabe advice. And maybe after that, if we can deal with, if there's got to be any, if there's an application for a redaction to that document, we can discuss that.
Yes. And if there are any others that are noted by someone as pending my determination, if they can be brought to my attention, I can look at them over the lunch break.
Mr. Jaakar, we had on the screen the email that Mr. Portelli sent to the mayor and also Betty Busani?
Yes.
In response to the concern expressed by the mayor?
Yes.
Is it your recollection that after Mr. Portelli's email containing that explanation was sent to the mayor, the matter in a sense disappeared?
The matter disappeared, but why it disappeared? Portelli had pointed out, after discussion with me, a number of matters that made it very difficult for the mayor to say, I knew nothing about this. Because clearly he'd responded to emails.
So in the lead up to the council resolution, there were emails either to the mayor or copied to the mayor?
It was after the council resolution. So there was an email to the mayor from the lawyers and to myself.
All right, don't tell us the content of that.
Yes. And in it, the mayor responded to it and indicated one change that need to be made. So it became very difficult for him to say he knew nothing about lawyers.
I knew nothing when he's nominating a change or an amendment.
Correct.
And ultimately?
And the change was made by the lawyers.
Sorry, I'm sorry, had you finished?
And the change was made by the lawyers before the letter was sent out.
The letter to whom?
So the lawyers had prepared a draft letter to go to Michael Angelov's lawyers.
All right. Just so I'm clear in my mind, and just pause before you answer in case I inadvertently venture into territory that someone might want to object to. But you said the mayor said to you he knew nothing about something? What is the something that he said? Just hang on, sorry, just let me finish my question. No, no, it's okay. Just so we're clear about what it is you're responding to. I understood you to say the mayor had communicated to you, I knew nothing about it. Did I understand you correctly?
Yes.
What was that it that he was describing to you?
So he said it to me verbally, but he also said that in his email, that he had never given instructions or counsel, by that, I mean counsel as in a lawyer, to respond to Angelovick's notice. He never wanted that.
The issue I understood the mayor to be raising in relation to the text of the resolution that you were shown?
Yes.
Was about the fact that the resolution referred to the payment of the mayor's legal expenses, but made no reference to the context of the insurance policy? That is, it was eroding the deductible of the insurance policy. Was that ever a matter that you discussed with the mayor?
Yes, in the previous meetings that myself, Portelli, the mayor and his assistant, Betty Bustani, we had actually gone through all the steps because there were a number of alternatives. From memory, I think three separate alternatives of how to claim other insurance, but we covered each and every one of those. And he agreed to the one that was ultimately put in the business paper for council that passed that resolution.
I see.
But ultimately, Mr. Portelli's email resolved, I know you said there was a little bit toing and froing, but ultimately it resolved the issue?
It was left alone.
You have referred to, and in the table which we briefly saw, which I think was dealing with communications with the mayor and Betty Busani. Can I just ask you about her, at this point, what was her role?
So Betty Bustani was appointed as the senior policy advisor. She replaced Shane Mallard when he became a director.
So Mr. Mallard was appointed the permanent director of City Futures?
Correct.
That led to a vacancy in the position of senior policy advisor?
Correct.
And Miss Busani was appointed to that role?
Correct, by the relevant director.
Do you recall who the relevant director was?
It would have either been Tina Bono or Farooq Portelli that would have had that role at the time.
She's a senior policy advisor. I understand your evidence that under the new structure, she comes under the directorship of either Tina Bono or Mr. Portelli?
That's what I understand.
But there's descriptions of her role as senior policy advisor to the mayor?
That's how it's described. Senior policy advisor to the mayor, and then these junior policy advisors to the mayor. Then there's EA to the mayor, and then deputy EA to the mayor.
At this point, are you in Moore Street? And I'm sorry, when I say this point?
When she was first hired?
Yes.
Yes.
Physically, when she was first hired, where was she located?
Again, in that small breakout room that Shane Mallard used to be in, as a junior policy advisor.
Which is near the mayor's office?
It's almost, so there's the mayor's office, there's the mayor's reception, and then there's a breakout room.
Like a meeting room?
Yeah, it could be a small conference room.
But it's got desks in it and that's where?
It had two desks in it, two computers.
They work from?
Both of them work from there.
So it's like a mini open plan office in the?
Except that there were real solid walls in between.
Was it something called the Merrill suite that might be used in other councils? I don't say that in a pejorative term. Other councils call it a Merrill or executive suite. Is that what it was? Like an area with the general manager's office and support staff, the mayor's office and the support staff, which is
Yes.
sort of not completely closed off, but all sitting together? Is that the idea?
Yes.
And again, just to assist me, the move from Moore Street to Civic Place, did that occur while you were still employed at council?
Yes.
When did that occur? Again, roughly?
Late twenty three, early twenty four. It may even be, say, February twenty four.
And Miss Bustani's office or work area, did it move to adopt the description by the commissioner? Did it move to Civic Place in an area of the Merrill suite?
So the original plans had the mayor's office, and then it had one EA's desk directly outside the mayor's office. And then there was the councillors' offices on the other side. And then there was my office on the other side. So that was basically the executive precinct, if I could call that, and the councillors' precinct. The only person that the plans originally had were for the EA to be outside the mayor's office and my EA to be outside my office. The mayor insisted on having those plans changed because he wanted his EA, deputy EA, and he wanted his senior policy advisor and junior policy advisor outside his office. He wanted all four of them out there. So we had to make some changes to the floor plan to affect four desks and then move all of the lounge chairs, sitting area for the public who were visiting either of us further down.
Like a little reception area, you mean?
Yeah, but, and it was open. The mayor then insisted, before it was that he wanted the, that area closed off with the walls, he did not want. It made no sense. We argued about that and the costs involved in subsequent works occurring. And then finally, it was agreed to put that wall up. The wall had not yet gone up when I was terminated. And then finally, it was agreed to put that wall up. The wall had not yet gone up when I was terminated.
This is appropriate time.
Oh, yes, it's gone quickly, for me at least. Mr Jaakha, we're going to break for lunch. We'll resume again at two o'clock, so if you wouldn't mind being back here a couple of minutes before two o'clock, we'll see you then.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Is there anything else I need to do before we adjourn?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Two o'clock.